Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order on Monday, May 15th. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
May I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel interviews and discussion of leases? Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Terrific. May I have a motion to return to open session? Sarah moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. First Selectman's report. Last Friday, last Friday, town closed on Great Island, and now we own a beautiful piece of coastline forever. We've been meeting with applicants to, for the Great Island Committee. I think I've mentioned it. We have 45 very enthusiastic applicants that we are interviewing, and I'm confident that in the end, we will find a list of very skilled volunteers to help us going forward. As a reminder, until safety protocols are completed and roads and walkways are modified, vehicular, pedestrian, and cycling traffic is restricted to island residents and town personnel only. The RTM passed the town budget, the fiscal '23-'24 budget at its meeting on May 8th. I want to thank our department heads. I want to thank Kate Bush, John Trunsky, our board, and the Board of Finance, and all of the members of the RTM for their thoughtful considerations during this. Last Thursday, the Public Works Department held a meeting in Town Hall to go over the salt box drainage study. The presentation was well attended. I think we had over 40 residents from that area present, and after an hour-long presentation, there was a very productive questions and question-and-answer session that lasted for about another hour. So, for those that are interested, the study and the video are on the website under Community Matters, and they're listed under Salt Box Lane Study Update. The Henley Homes and Royal Building School Committee is still looking for two additional members, so if you're interested, please contact Selectman's office. I was asked recently what I thought about inviting all elected officials to participate in the town's annual Memorial Day Parade, and I fully support this idea. I think it's, I think it's an opportunity for elected officials to show their support for our nation's heroes and their families. So, elected officials will receive an email from the Parade Committee, and if they are interested, you would contact, the email is 06820mayparade@gmail, or you can look on the website. The deadline to register to march in this parade is May 20th. And again, it's for all elected officials, so I hope if you're around and you feel like joining us, that you will. The parade begins at 10 o'clock from the Goodwives River Shopping Center and goes down the Post Road. And as in the past parades, the U.S. Air Force will provide a C-130 flyover of the parade route. And I hope you will keep an eye out for this really awe-inspiring aircraft. It really is. Like, when you see it do that dip, it's really, really, I don't know, it's kind of breathtaking. Along with your plans to kick off the summer with family and friends, I hope you will find time to reflect on what this day means to our servicemen and women and our veterans and their families. So, on behalf of the Darien community, I wish to express sincere gratitude to all of those in the armed forces that are protecting the freedoms that we enjoy today. Lastly, I want to thank Jim Palin for organizing the first pickleball tournament. We have, we had the Board of Selectmen led by our captain, Mike Burke. Excellent, excellent pick on my part. We had Board of Finance members, he was, he's terrific, Board of Finance members, Board of Ed members, Planning and Zoning members, volunteers, they're giving it their all, which was really exciting. We had people that weren't playing there to cheer on, so, I don't know, it was a really cool event. So, looking forward to next year, and congratulations to Katie Lublin and Julie Best for, for being undisputed winners in the tournament. They took home, I'm sure if you ask them, they will be willing to share their trophy with you. That's all I have. Kate?
I have nothing.
Okay. Liaison reports. Mike?
Blight review met on May 10th. With all members present, we reviewed the nine properties on the list. We had two property owners come in to discuss their situations. There was one property owner who has been working in reducing the level of blight, and we voted to suspend that person's fine while they continued to work on their property. Another property owner came in who was consistent in being unwilling to rectify the blight, and we voted to file an additional lien. So, again, people who are on that list, please come in, please talk to us. We're willing to work with everybody, and we will meet again next month.
Okay. Okay. Sarah?
For the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee, the next meeting should be on May 24th, and that would be after seeing the updated cost estimates that would, should be coming in earlier that week. Recently, town halls, so to speak, were held with the faculty and PTO at Henley and Homes. Royal is this upcoming Wednesday, and they've gone well. The presentations were with the architect and the construction firm, as well as, as well as members of the administration of the Darien Public Schools, as well as the co-chairs, Jill McCammon and Chris Price. They discussed the projects, how they were going to proceed, and trying to be the least disruptive as possible for the school community, highlighting their innovations, and the fact that staging work has been carefully planned, and they're trying to minimize the impacts of students and staff in the buildings, and to maximize any available space. They're very focused on safety and building physical walls between the work areas and the students to make sure everyone's safe, and everyone who doesn't belong on, as far as with the children, are, you know, separated from the students. Deliveries will still happen after school hours, and there'll be walls and fans, and loud underwork like hammering will be scheduled around school days to minimize disruption. So, they're trying very hard to make sure it is as peaceful a process as possible. As far as thriving use task force, the next meeting is this Thursday, May 19th.
So, Sarah, on the staging area, will they pick one spot and stay with that?
Yes, they have, they have determined for each school, there's this particular staging area that they've chosen.
That'll be throughout the project?
Mm-hmm. But, but it may change depending on where the work is, particularly for some of the schools, like Royal, they're doing a lot of work, well, and actually, all of them, they're, you know, working in different places, so it depends.
So, okay.
But it's done, you know, during the phases, it may change, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Jim?
Nothing.
No? Okay. Marcy?
So, Oxford Building Committee met last Thursday, very briefly. It was like a 10-minute meeting. Things are on time, on budget, as expected, so things are going very well there. Again, school should be open 100% full force when the kids return back in August, so parking lots should be done, playgrounds should be done, gymnasium, cafeteria, looks like it's all set.
So, when are they doing their, like, grand opening?
Will not happen until after we go back after school.
After school starts?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, because the parking lots will not be paved until, like, the last week in August. So, at that point, we'll have, yeah, to be able to get cars in.
Okay. Thanks. Kate, any public?
Nope.
Nothing? Okay. Okay. So, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request to, to approve the 44th Annual Darien Road Race. Do we have any, do we have any, any questions for Kate on this?
No.
You know, it's a, it's a race we have every year.
They got all their approvals.
Has all their approvals? Yep. I think this year, they want all of the Board of Selectmen members to participate?
Right.
You okay with that? Okay. In all seriousness, any questions for Kate on this one?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the 44th Annual Darien Road Race? Marcy moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Terrific. All right. Forty-fourth Annual, that is, that's pretty cool. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action to approve various leases for tenants of Great Island. Kate, you want to give us a little?
Yeah, sure. It's, it's been a long time since the town has been a residential landlord. We were once in the past. We used to rent a building we owned at Weed Beach. It had an apartment in it, and we rented that, but it's been a long time. We were asked, these, these buildings are going to be strictly, aside from stables, strictly residential. They may have a municipal purpose in the future, but right now, they're going to stay strictly residential except for the stables. The stables owner is responsible for all the things, like providing insurance for the horses and that activity, not the town. And we are applying for a special permit from Planning and Zoning to allow the operation of a commercial facility in the residential zone. So, leave that later this month. It'll be on the agenda. Bobby Burney from Curtis Minkerhoff is here. He's been doing the work on the leases, so he's going to give you a brief summary on the, provide a summary on the kind of standard terms, but also, there's some unique terms in, that we're proposing for each of the, or some of the leases. You have to over the mic. Sorry.
So, we have a series of four residential leases and one non-residential lease for consideration here. The four residential leases are primarily based off of terms that were agreed upon and reached by the prior landlord and the current remaining tenants. We are, in our new proposed leases, for, which would all span for one year, from June 2023 to June 2024, maintain the same rent levels and the same utilities payments arrangements as from the prior year's leases. They are, as I said, restricted to a one-year term with a 90-day early termination right in favor of both parties, exercisable at will. The leases in general restrict the tenant's usage to their immediate dwelling area and the immediate geographic region surrounding their dwelling area. The provisions regarding liability, indemnification, responsibility for repairs, carriage of insurance, nonassignment, non-subletting are all standard for residential leases throughout the state of Connecticut. We have a set of rules and regulations for these properties regarding use, no excessive noise, no unordinary use of the premises. Each lease will also contain an addendum notifying the tenants of the existence of arsenic in the subsoil of Great Island, that we have been advised that the arsenic does not present any sort of prohibition on the habitation of these units. They are fit for habitation, but nevertheless, the tenants should not engage in any disturbance of the soil. They should not enter into any marked-off areas that are do-not-enter, prohibited from access, signs of that sort. And a few of the leases contain what I would call unique provisions. 24 Great Island contains a molten allergen statement relating to prior concerns raised by the tenant roughly a decade ago, specifying that the, the tenant acknowledges prior tests have been done and no mold or allergens have been detected in the dwelling unit. 40 Great Island contains, Great Island Road contains unique provisions regarding the swimming pool, and that must remain covered, inoperable, and any, any type of use throughout the term of the lease is strictly prohibited. 40 Great Island Road lease also contains a pet addendum authorizing the owner to have no more than four dogs on premises who must be identified and under the tenant's responsibility and control. 46 Great Island contains a provision regarding electric vehicles and a surcharge for any electric vehicle charging done at the premises. Then the final lease regards the, is regarded to the terms of the use of serenity stables. Based on general usage in the past, it restricts the activities to the areas typically used for horse-related activities, requires the tenant to be responsible for any sort of extraordinary wear and tear or degradation to the utilities due to horse-related waste or products. And otherwise, also lasts only for a one-year period, a 90-day early termination right in favor of either party, just as with the residential leases.
Okay. Thank you, Bobby, for this, and thank you for answering all of our questions before. Do we have any other questions for Bobby?
Just, I know that the term of the lease is to start on June 15th. Do you have an idea of what your process is to get the leases? Obviously, that's the, the date by which you want to, to come to an agreement with the, the tenants?
Mm-hmm.
And so, what are your, you know, next steps? Or you'll just be negotiating these leases with them over the course of the next six weeks or so, or?
Correct. I, I assume that, given that many of these terms are familiar to them already, it should be a relatively short negotiation period, and for a one-year term, it's not a long-term commitment, so hopefully, it will move quickly.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah.
What we'll do is we'll, we'll talk to the tenants between now and in, in the next couple of weeks, because the RTM will have to vote on these.
Okay.
And they vote on June 5th, June 5th is their meeting.
Okay.
So, we will be working with the Rules Committee as soon as we make any adjustments that we discussed earlier.
Okay. Terrific. Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, thank you, Bobby. Any other questions? Marcy? No? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve, as amended earlier in the evening with our, our amendments, our corrections, additions, et cetera, the various leases for tenants of Great Island, and to recommend approval by the RTM? Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. Unanimous. Thanks, Kate. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request to accept a gift of statues valued in excess of $12,500 from the Steinkrauss family. I'm going to read something, and I think it will help explain. So, "It's my honor to share with you an extraordinary opportunity that's been extended to our town. The Steinkrauss family has expressed their desire to donate two magnificent garden marble statues named 'Platonic Love' by sculptor John Gregory and 'Romantic Love' by Mario Corbo. These exceptional works of art carry significant historical and cultural value for our town. They have served as beloved landmarks for sailors, their shining white surfaces reflecting sunlight and spotlights, making them visible for miles offshore. These statues hold the remarkable distinction of being double figures, which is really unusual, and it's an uncommon feature that adds to their artistic rarity and contributes to their impressive appraised value of $425,000. Furthermore, their connection to our town's heritage is profound, with Corbo's donation dating back to 1939 and Gregory's to 1936, and they will now become an integral part of our cultural fabric, enriching our community for many decades to come. In terms of their physical size, each statue stands at approximately 67 inches, I think that's like five and a half feet, right, by five and a half feet, 55 inches and 27 inches, with the mounting platforms providing additional height. I am here to ask you to formally request the approval to accept this remarkable gift. The Steinkrauss's family's generosity and commitment to preserving our town's heritage through art should be recognized and embraced. Accepting these statues will be a testament to our town's dedication to cultural enrichment and historical preservation." You've seen these statues most likely. They're, they're displayed prominently out on the lawn by the main house. We will, we will need to diligently take care of them and maintain them, and preserve their beauty and historical significance for future generations. So, on behalf of our entire community, I would like to express our deepest gratitude to the Steinkrauss family for their exceptional generosity in offering these breathtaking works of art. It's an honor to be considered as a recipient of such a remarkable gift. So, any questions? May please then have a motion to accept gifts of the statues valued at $425,000 from the Steinkrauss family? Marcy moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Up, next up is an update from the Advisory Commission on Coastal Waters regarding harbor moorings policy, and we've asked, I've asked John Zagrasky to give us an update.
So, I, I attended that meeting. It was on May 11th, and went on for quite a while, a very interesting discussion. They are not quite ready to present the recommendations of the commission to, to this group yet. Just by way of review, what's under consideration is an update to the moorings policy, if you will, for all of the coastal waters here in Darien. These are for boat moorings. All of that is overseen by our harbor master, John Keena, and what he's in the process of doing is updating the language of those regulations so that they can be more precisely enforced, not necessarily more rigorously or in, or in any kind of punitive way, but just to be, to enable him to be very clear about what the rules are and how they need to be followed. So, the, the process that they've adopted is that he drafted some changes to those rules that me was taped, if anybody's, is interested in taking a look. There was some very good input from the members of the working group that are spending time on this. John has done some revisions, and I think it's going to take it one more time before that group. I'll attend that as well. And then with the, the four working members of the sort of moorings policy group, what they're going to do is come to the Board of Selectmen with John and present that to all of us. I'm not quite sure when that'll be, hopefully, at our next meeting, because I know we're in the middle of voting season, and we'd like to get this out in the public and sorted and approved. But, very thoughtful discussion. We're going to have a very good work product when it's done.
So, John, are these changes, when will they be effective?
That's for the board to decide.
I mean, because we're, we're sort of late in the season. I mean, I was...
Yeah, so, some of them pertain, for example, to what, right, because one of the things you have to do is you have to have your boat attached to your mooring as of June 15th. What does that really mean? Do we give people periods of time where they don't have to be on the mooring, and what does that exception look like? And do you have to get permission? All of that. I think we would put those things in to the extent that there is a regulation that's date-specific, like the June 15th one. Maybe that becomes effective next year, but what I'll have them do is give us recommendations, not just on the changes in the mooring regulations, but also their recommendation as to when to make them effective, to give people a chance to comply should those regulations be, except their big changes.
So, are they working with the boat club at all?
Well, all of this is fairly incestuous. Everybody's a member of a bike club, more than a rowing yacht club.
And both.
Right, or both. And so, as a default matter, then, you know, yes, all, all of those forces are, are part and parcel to all this.
Having input?
Yeah.
Okay. But it is strictly the Coastal Commission that's the only group working on this? Right.
Well, yeah, the, the enforcement of the rules are the strict purview of the harbor master, and what they're trying to do is recommend changes to those rules that will help him do his job, but it's really this body that needs to consider all that.
Okay. So, you think the next meeting?
Let's see what happens, but I will try for that.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for John? No? Okay. All right. Thanks, John. Okay. Next up is to review and approve the minutes of the May 1st, 2023 regular meeting. Any additions, edits?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve? Marcy moves. John seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. Any agenda review, any topics board members would like to see on a future agenda?
After having attended the study about the drainage for Salt Box Lane, and I know so many of our residents are very concerned and very interested and very anxious and eager for that work to start, I know that there is some work that they're doing kind of behind the scenes to get ready for next steps, but I do think if they, we could have, you know, Ed and whoever else come and give an update and...
Yeah, we're going to do that. Absolutely.
I know we've gotten emails as a board, people are very interested in it. I had some folks reach out today, or like, are they talking about it tonight? And I know that, that we'd love to be able to give them that. It was very thorough, and I encourage anyone who did not watch it in person to go watch the, our recording. It's very helpful.
Yeah. Sarah and I were both there. It's, it was illuminating to listen. Yeah, it was a very long presentation, but I think worthwhile, actually, to sit through that whole thing. So, gives you a real education on some of the issues, particularly in that, that region.
Yeah. Kate and I talked today. I, I think what we might do is have, so that Ed doesn't have to go through everything twice, maybe have a joint meeting with the Board of Finance and go through...
Think that makes sense?
But I would strongly, highly encourage everybody to take a look at the video and at the study that's online, and, you know...
There's a big ramifications financially, so we should all be...
Yeah, yeah, there is. Absolutely. It's a big decision.
The only thing I would add to all that is that this was, this was one study, right? I don't, there's, there's others that are out there. They're all going to have their own separate set of recommendations, and so I would urge us to just try to get a holistic view of all this, so we have a, a sort of sense of exactly what we want to do overall, and if we have an overall cost number as opposed to approving these, these piecemeal, I think that would be a mistake. I get that a lot of residents want to move forward. There was even discussion in the meeting about things that you could do to address flooding today rather than having to wait, because this particular construction, to get the, all the recommendations implemented, it's going to take three years to get through reviews, construction, all that. It's going to take a long time.
Right.
And these residents would be at risk for three years until, until all this gets put online. So, in any case, everybody is motivated to move forward quickly on this, but I really think as a board, we should have a complete view of what all this is, what are all the recommendations, what are all the costs, and then decide what's best for the overall town.
Right.
We're not in a position to do that yet, in my judgment.
No, we're not. In the, in the Corbin study, you know, that's another big study, so looking at them in the entirety, I think, is...
Can you remind us, Kate, which studies are still outstanding that we need to, we'll need to review?
That one is.
That one is.
Yeah. The Bailey is, is completed.
And I think, you know, your point about the time it's going to take, it might be valuable to not just look at the cost of all the things that might be out there, but what the timeline would look like, because there may be some things, you know, you could maybe ease the impact of the cost based on the timelines, that some of the smaller projects may be able to go on, you know, while we're getting ready for the bigger projects.
Yeah. I think, I think it would be good if Ed came and gave us kind of a, you know, on the studies, what we're looking at there, you know, we, we had three major studies, one of them is completed, and that looks like it, there's limited action that we can take on that one, but this study and the Corbin study, big studies, but then also what we're looking at on the side, you know, there are other projects that we've, that will, that, you know, that we're going to start July 1st as soon as, as soon as, you know, fiscal year starts. So, getting like a holistic look at everything, I think, to what you were saying.
Yeah. Do we know when the Corbin Drive, what the Bailey study is finished? Has that been, have we had a similar public discussion of that study yet?
No, that's the, the Tilly Pond one is the, the Tilly area, the Corbin area, that's the one...
Yeah, we're waiting on that.
And do we have a sense of when that will be ready for a similar kind of public presentation?
No. But I'm sure Ed could.
We ought, we ought to get an update from Ed then, because the, the way the Salt Box study was presented was, we're going to, in other words, we're about to go to the first selectman, and she's going to release a whole bunch of things, and this is going to go into motion, and so it felt like in the meeting that this was...
That's what the residents feel, like, we're, when are we starting? Because it seems like a, we're in motion with us.
Yeah, it felt like this was all approved and moving forward, and I would just caution everybody, look, we're going to move as, as quickly as possible, but this has got to go through all the normal channels, Board of Finance, RTM approval, bonding, we have to get all our ducks in a row to make this happen. Let's not get over our skis.
And all the state agencies and, you know...
Well, and that, I mean, and that's sort of subsequent to all these approvals, right? Because once you approve them, and that's, that's in motion, these state agency permission requests, and that actually was about a year of all the work that needs to be done. So, there's a lot of wood to chop to get this done, but I, again, in my judgment, we need to get a, kind of a complete view of everything that's being proposed here, so, and we don't have that.
Okay. Okay. We'll work, that will be priority. We'll work on that. Okay. Anything else? Nothing? Okay. Thanks, everyone. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Unanimous. Come on.